Seven o'clock, so we'll start the Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Cedar Springs Planning Commission meeting. Do the pledge of allegiance. I'll be ordering, do the pledge of allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Hoag contacted me. Right, it said fifteenth on here. So I just read what it said. So it's, so let the record show that it's actually the fourteenth.
I was so confused, I was like, wait.
Days mean nothing to me, so I just read what was in front of me. Uh, Mr. Hoag contacted me and said that he wouldn't be able to make it tonight. Uh, Mr. Merlington, you know, heard from him? It's not here, Ms. Dabrowski?
Nixon? Howell?
Here.
Here?
Um, Ms. Falcon, Mr. Moore, Ms. Johnson, representing the city. And, um, next thing we need to do is look at our minutes from the regular meeting of April ninth. See if we can approve those. Wearing issues or celebrations about the minutes?
My contacts or whatever you want to call them. They only have a blank screen. I knew what to do, I'd do it. There we go. Thank you, ma'am.
So, um, I want to make sure that Ms. Howell has enough time to feel comfortable with it.
Came, so I was, I was cool with that.
So, um, any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes from last month, please say goodbye with aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Tonight's agenda? Not, uh, super full, that's fun, but, uh, I'm sure we'll find something important to do tonight. Um, they have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Oh, motion.
Us, us.
Take Miss Powell.
Any discussion about tonight's agenda? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by with aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We have an agenda. Public comments. I don't see any public here. Um, are there any public online? Okay, um, then I will, um, public comments and move on to conflicts of interest and ex parte communication inquiry. Is there any of that that anyone on the commission needs to report?
Not I.
Uh, item eight, schedule public hearings, there are none. Item nine, site plan reviews, there are none. Item ten, other business, um, ten A is a discussion on short-term rentals. And I will, as soon as, um, I'm not sure who I should kick that to, but whoever wants to take it.
So, uh, you should have in front of you two ordinances. On one is, other one is an ordinance to, um, the, an ordinance to amend, uh, code to add chapter eight. So what we're, what we have drafted here is, is, I'm sure surmised that we ordinance to amend, uh, to add chapter eight to your quote of ordinance is, is, is really the, the meat and potatoes of what we're doing here. All, all of the regulations are. So, uh, what this would do is the zoning side would permit short-term rentals in those couple of zoning districts that we had discussed, I think it was R two and, subject two, lines with this, with this, um, general law ordinance regulating short-term rental. Why we do it that way, um, is because, you know, one zoning isn't, isn't the best tool for enforcement, it's not the best tool for, um, regulating what's more of an activity than a land use. And, um, I think it's also a better approach because we don't have to, so like if we did this as a special land use, which a lot of communities do, um, it's the end of, we have the whole public hearings and do the noticing thing, we potentially run into issues with, um, conformities, people that have been doing, all of this in zoning, so I kind of like the approach where you take it out of zoning, except for you just make it a permitted use subject. So if somebody wants to operate a, a short-term rental, they have to come in and, and, and go through the process that's listed in this ordinance and register with the city, but they would, come in front of the planning commission. That's all. Um, so, we'll just kind of go through here, I think, kind of section by section at first, if, if you guys want to, definitely view. So kind of starting with section, oh, section eight dash one twenty, so this would all be new sections in the quote of ordinances. Those two sections, just give a short title, and then there's a, a purpose statement that it basically states why we're doing what we're doing, like, why are we going to propose to regulate short-term. Eight dash one twenty-one consists of a bunch of definitions, uh, that are used within the ordinance, so we have a good, a definition for dwelling unit, which is going to be the same thing as is written. Definition for a local agent, somebody within twenty miles of the property, physically beyond site. Again, occupants, uh, owners, rental, rental, short-term rental, are going to have that definition. A couple of things to point out here, um, notice that the definition for a short-term rental, uh, is for not more than twenty-nine consecutive nights. Say anything, gone that someone's renting something for thirty days or forty-five days or five years, that's just, okay. At a single-family resident. That wouldn't apply here. The other thing that I would point out is that when we're talking about, uh, the definition for occupants, just a couple above that, uh, we have individual at least twenty-four months of age. Have that in here because if we're going to be limiting potentially the number of individuals who, died in a short-term rental, I don't know that we want to count like infants, um, because they don't really occupy the same space and have to, put their own, felt, um, have that twenty-four months in there for, also make a difference. There's five people renting a house, and that's what they're allowed to have, but they have a couple visitors over for a couple hours, we're not going to count those people.
And if they have children under twenty-four months, they can't, they can't rent it?
They can, it's just that we wouldn't count the children under twenty-four months as occupants, so it wouldn't count, if, if there's a limit on the number of occupants that can be in the house, it wouldn't count infants. But you could have five adults and two children under the age of two. For the purposes of this ordinance, we would say there are five occupants.
So, the legal age, as I understand it, to enter a contract is eighteen? So, you know, you, we, how would we feel about having some couple of sixteen-year-olds renting a, short-term rental? Is there any way that that could be addressed? Or is it in here?
Uh, that's a good question, I'd have to, it might be in here, um. If not, we could certainly add something that would require, you know, under the, shall be able to.
Or at least be legal adult.
Like if somebody's on Airbnb or the RBO, but at the same time, you have, use those platforms, the short-term, there are people, but the internet was the thing, so, um, we can check into that and see if,
I would think the primary would have to be eighteen or older.
Um, under, let's see. Section eight dash one twenty-two, we have applicability and exceptions, so this, apply only to short-term rentals, and we have a few exception for what does not constitute a, a short-term rental. So again, if you have your, extended family over, if your house sitting, if you're, um, if there's a transition period after a house has been, closed on sale and someone's living there for, or renting it for a short period of time, things like that, we're not going to count those as, as short-term rentals, that's what. S one twenty-three requires the annual registration permit. Um, and then B, discuss what has to be provided in the application. Basically, we just wrote in here, since you already have a rental inspection and registration program, we're proposing to simply follow what your rental, currently is, that we're going to add this subsection B one through five. Events who intend to. Those five things aren't specifically listed in your, after long-term rentals, so we felt like those were appropriate to add here. Uh, same thing with section eight dash one twenty-four, so your regular rental registration sort of, um, that's a practice the city already follows and knows how to do, so. Uh, eight dash one twenty-five permits, um, so this says they permit shall be issued upon acceptance of a completed registration and the inspection. Uh, so we proposed in here, and feel free to change this, that we're going to. Um, that's a number that you are free to modulate up and down as much as you want. Or take it out completely, right? So we have some communities that don't, search for rentals at all, but there are some communities that have some number on this, like this, I think the City of Grand Rapids only issue. But we do have a handful of people who are doing it currently, so, um, if you are in, in, regulating this and not having too many of them, I would suggest, you know, um, if you're concerned about, you know, some of the potential effects here, so again, we, we put five in here, not maybe did that, so again, feel free to, offer a different.
Well, I thought that's what we had agreed to, because this was kind of like a trial right now.
Yeah.
So like, we put five in and it's a trial, and then after a year, if we see that, oh, we have more people, then we can always bump the number up a little bit.
Yep.
But I didn't even think we saw five that were using it, really.
Yeah, I think there was three. Looked on VRPO, there were two downtown, and then there was one over, uh, just a couple blocks west of.
And that was the one with permits and stuff? Were we going to have to give them a special permit? The one that's behind the brewery?
No, you wouldn't have to give them a special permit, um, so when you adopt this, uh, you know, we probably, it probably makes sense to reach out to them. Okay, we've adopted a short-term rental, and then you need to get in. And they should be able.
Is that, is that particular place in the R one? The R two?
One of the residential districts.
Yes, in one of them, I don't know, it's R one or two. Know there's some apartments over there, but, I'd have to go look at the map.
So in the zoning ordinance, um, the districts that we, when we talked about this last month, the districts that we've decided to permit these things in, we're basically including the ones that are existing. A double check, but yeah, those would be the only.
Did we? Are we going to allow how, uh, short-term rentals in single-family residential?
So, a- as this is proposed, yes.
I thought it was R two, though.
We started with B two. Downtown.
B two.
R two. Yeah, yeah. Single-family or two-family residential.
Yeah.
Just single families.
Oh, yeah, and we had thought about that, so, you know, with allowing them in, in R two, that is a fairly large geographic area, which is why having the overall cap on, on the number of places is maybe important. Because if you are concerned about these eventually proliferate. Uh, community, having a cap on the overall number of listens, so they, they, they issue. There from being too many. Start to see more and more, they're getting kind of too concentrated in one area. Block or not, you can't, one can't be within a couple hundred feet of, of another one, or something like that, if there's, concerned about them concentrating, and this is a huge short-term rental community, but in, in, in some other places where they have a lot of issues with them, um, there have been concerns. Nothing but short-term rentals. There, the company of like one or two per block is all that we're going to allow, and so they're sort of devising ways to come from being kind of, one right next to each other because there can be issues with parking and stuff like that. I don't see, I don't see that as a huge issue right now, but it'll be something to think about as we go forward.
I was thinking it would be, the way we did it with the, the marijuana businesses, we would only allow so many in each zone. Might be something to consider.
Yes, we could do the same thing, we could say, three in the B two and, three in the R two. Yeah, that would be absolutely fine.
And, um, I don't know about the R three and the R four, R three is multifamily. As trailers, and there might be a possibility for some short-term rentals in those zones.
Yeah, so we hadn't, um, we hadn't suggested them in the, in the manufactured housing district primarily, I think, those units are pretty tightly packed together.
Right.
A lot of the issues with the, the short-term rentals, some of which I think are over-exaggerated, like the parking and all that kind of stuff. Um, but the other issues that come up with those relate to parking, because a lot of short-term rentals have, coming from different places and not going to meet at the short-term rental, and all of a sudden you have three or four, five or six cars on a property that's not really intended or capable of accommodating all that, and so if you do that, in a manufactured housing community, you're probably sort of further, furthering a problem that you already have with some of those.
Yeah, just like in R one, there's, it's, parking is difficult in some of those neighborhoods.
Then for, we could permit them in the, uh, um, you know, our thought for now was to sort of proceed with the few that we have existing in the city. See how it goes, if there's a demand for more, you know, it might, um, and, and we can always expand this.
Yeah, it would have been nice back in the day when we didn't have a hotel, but we don't want to get, take their business away. You know, for their, somebody that's coming here for a week or something.
So for the short-term rental, uh, registration under eight dash one twenty-seven, um, so we have some performance standards for all, all short-term rentals. A lot of these are, are pretty straightforward, so, you'd be visible and prominently listed street address. Maximum occupancy shall be, uh, as, by the International Property Maintenance Code, um, shall provide, see, uh, the owner slash local agent must be, times, or keep unit and be able to be present, present within thirty minutes when contacted by the city. Um, a minimum of two spaces shall be provided for the first two bedrooms, plus one additional, uh, additional piece. Space for each additional bedroom. So, this gets to the parking issue, right? If you have five bedrooms, then you better be prepared to have.
Did you mean to put that parking on the grass?
Oh.
Never mind. I read that so many times today. And I kept seeing prohibited, and I kept thinking in my head that you were saying it was allowed. And I read it again, and,
no, if we want.
I did not, and I kept reading that over and over, and I was like, is he really, we don't want that, and, okay, thank you.
No, no problem.
My brain just not working.
Um, appearance, so under F, we want them to maintain the character. Want them to basically, well, and, and else. Um, printer, the bun units used as short-term rentals must be, be provided copies of this ordinance, uh, information on trash pickup, property boundaries, maximum number of onsite parking spaces. Et cetera, any laws, rules, customary practices regarding this would be, activities, neighborhood rules, et cetera, so basically, want people to be good neighbor. Um, we want them to know when the trash is going to come by, we want them to know where they can park, we want them to know where the property lines are, we want the resident. Thing, the backyard or, or something like that, that they know where their parking lot is. Um, age, they need to, by, I, only thing that's a pilot can see is noise over there. Ends are addressed in a quote of ordinances, so we just, we, we also added a section here on revocation of a short-term rental permit. So they are the subject of three violations in a single year. Uh, so under two, we have some, some, uh, samples of what a violation would look like, so, for upkeep of, of, of the unit, like the smoke detectors, or lawful sleeping areas. Maximum occupancy, et cetera, those are all potentially grounds for the,
So, we've got one here, it's, it's a couch. It's just a couch in a shared home, is that?
Typically, no, uh, we did have, we, there was one of these to be real for someone else where they specifically authorized, like a sleeper sofa could be okay. But for most of these, we're kind of relying on the, on the International Property Maintenance Code, which talks about how much room you have to have for, how many beds in a bedroom, and how big the bedroom has to be, with how many, a certain number of beds and individuals. This ordinance falls back on that point a bit, so, just sleeping on a couch or on the floor, I'd say no, not something that would be permitted.
It's listed, can you imagine? Two hundred bucks a night to sleep on a couch?
Oh, I mean.
Offer.
Oh, if it's two hundred bucks a night, you have five people there. People might not, right?
Yeah.
Things happen.
No.
So.
It's amazing, though.
So, so L, here, permit, revocation procedure, so this just walks through how that process plays out, so this is actually a city council would have to take an action to actually revoke that, that permit. Um, once they do that, if they do that, they cannot, uh, they're not issued any kind of, permit for a year, um, the individual is basically barred from using their property as a short-term rental. That's about it. So, um, we will add some language to this with respect to the age of the short-term renter. Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, is there anything that most wants to add or modify to this, or are there additional questions? Fact that we're going to take a couple of months to go through this and probably take action, so we're not too far, but.
My question was about the R two, B two thing, and that's been answered, so, um, as long as we're all okay with that. And everything I need.
Good to me, good start.
Mm-hmm.
No one, the city's not going to get overwhelmed with five. See how it works.
I think that helps with, with, with five as well, with the, if, section period takes some time and effort on the cities to have, like these things, so if you have twenty registrations, all of a sudden whoever's doing your inspection. Something is making a burden, yeah.
So if we already have like one or possibly more in the R one district now advertised as a short-term rental, how, how do we handle that?
Well, um, it's kind of off to the city, so if you want to be sticklers about it, you can send in a letter to say, for drafting ordinance to permit them, it, I think it, um, a thing and just kind of let them, what they're doing, since they're not causing any problems at present, um, but if you get a, a single complaint, then we're going to have to tell them up and say, and, you know, as, as we draft, there's one thing that, that we could do is send them a letter or contact them and advise them that, hey, we're working on it. Ordinance, we appreciate any feedback, so we want this to, we want, we don't want this to be overly burdensome for the people who are doing it necessarily, we want it to be fair, and so if there's something in here that they're going to have a hard time with, you know, you know that, they're what their concerns might be in.
Kind of reminds me of what we had to do with the multifamily homes in the R one district, we had to be creative in that respect.
Yeah, so I mean, like, they would be, technically again, if, if we want to be really, really strict, they are unlawfully non-conforming to a current community. The position, and a lot of communities have taken the position that this activity, within, in the B two, Within in the B two, because that's a commercial district where you would allow, you know, a hotel, it's probably less of a. Essential zones, you can absolutely take the decision that you're doing something, you're doing a commercial.
Yeah.
I think here, because there's only one, and they're kind of flying under the radar, I think that. Point, but um, I think it'd probably be worth. Sending them a letter or something that just says, hey. Drafting an ordinance or. Offering your property. You know, if you advise.
Yeah. Because if we have one, two or three more might pop up, you never know.
We're ready to move on to the next thing, then? That would be the zoning amendment, or no, I'm sorry, the master plan update.
There's things to talk about here. Um, in your packet we received. Not a complete. Uh. But a, you know, quite a bit of kind of the initial uh chunk of research that we have been doing. Um, so the way that we. Construct these plans is the first few chapters of the master plan is we are are providing a lot of existing. Of the city, so we. Search uh the the demographics of the community, your population.
Uh, forty four.
So page forty four of the packet here, we have the the your population row, which. And steadily. Creating, albeit somewhat s- more slowly than your neighbor, that's not surprising because mostly.
Seventeen.
But all of these communities in this. Or the county area are experiencing population. So that with the construct apartments. You know, the other projects coming up, that it's likely that your population is going to. That's kind of neat. Lot like a lot of cities are because you have the ability to expand. For twenty five, a- a- agreement to increase your population, but you're also increasing the. Ethical boundaries of this. Um, but your population is 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 slowly growing. We expect that to to to. Um. Uh, bracket, again, you're fairly, um, you know, evenly distributed age population, although although there is a little bit. Bracket is between sixty and sixty four, uh, which is not terribly surprising. We see that in a lot of communities where. Generation is oftentimes making up a. Usually see with with with. Healthy population of young people. Adults, um, the median age is often over cities and at different townships, and that's similar to what we've seen. So you have a pretty healthy. Population of of children. Five all the way to. Um. Uh, in a lot of communities, there's there are fewer children and there are more older people. Just a potential. Uh, so your median age is forty one point eight, which is back in the middle of where all of your neighbors are. Again, you'll notice it rock. I should try a little bit older. Feeling consistent. Terms of the. The graph, uh, plus you. The uh figure one point four that shows educational attainment, this shows the highest level of of e- of educational. That's a high school graduate, which is just under half. Um, and then you have just a reporter have some college, but no degree. Like you have, um, you know, about twenty two and have either associates and bachelors or some type. Um, is shown in figure five of the the. Um, typically see in smaller cities that the median. A lot of that is because in the townships, there are big houses on big lots that are often occupied by people with. This figure is not fairly surprising, and it's something that we'll have to keep in mind as you talk about. Economic development, as you talk about. Housing options we want. Are available to people. Most of your occupa- most of your uh housing is occupied, about maybe six percent of it. Um, it is. Cent owner occupied and forty three percent renter occupied, so. Um, that's a, that's a pretty high proportion of renters. I think that sort of underscored. Of the survey to make sure that we're. Enters, which is why I think we're gonna use registered voters for the. Surveyed, whether we do a sample or we do all of them, we'll kind of figure it out. Um, but if we send it to just the owners, we're gonna miss out on the input from a larger proportion. Not sure that we want want to do that. Rolls, tear it down, come up with a sample that. Um. Fifty. Six percent of your homes are one unit structure, so it's typical single family dwelling. You know, we have a quarter of them are showing up as being duplexes or something like that, or or, you know, multifamily built. Percent are mobile homes, as you know, there are two. Um, some other highlights here, kind of going through uh your employment base on figure one point eight is pretty well. Um, spread out amongst a bunch of different industries, which is good to see, not one industry driving everything. Um, that kind of help you mix, I think. Chapter three, we do a little bit of writing on 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 natural feature, watersheds, wetlands, things like that. Um, you know, virtually all of the city is in. Watershed areas, so all of the stormwater from the city eventually. Upper or the lower, most of it's heading down, uh, to the lower. Also included a map that shows wetland in the city. Um, not a huge concern, but there is kind of this this diagonal swath of wetlands in. West the community from. Up west. Then on following the uh result of pre. Up cover map, again, not surprising, but it it shows kind of how much of the city is developed in in some way, way, shape or form. Pockets of of less developed land. Um, but for the most part, the community is. Side from opportunity to expand through four twenty fives, you know, not a lot of developable land within your distinct. Not necessarily. Chapter four, we just kind of walk through uh the existing parks that are in the city and other recreational opportunities trail. Right up here on on public services, on schools. Uh, non motorized transportation corridor. It's kind of a fairly broad look at 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 ethnic community. Um, again, the the purpose of all of this writing is to kind of set you up with with knowing where you are and who you are and what the status of. So then when we're thinking about, you know, how we're gonna move forward in it, in. Kind of have a good basis of facts and knowledge about the community. Chapters will comprise a few chapters of the early portion of the plan. Uh, in 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 middle of 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 the document, we'll have a write up that summarizes the survey once that. The last three or four chapters of the plan will. Talk about a path moving forward in terms of policies and length. Um, and then the rest of the stuff that's included here is just um the list of. After receiving notice to. Plan, so if you remember last month, we had notice from Portland Township on their. It makes us publish all of these notices and send them out to all of your neighbors, so that's what's. Last thing that I wanted to talk to you about was the survey that I passed out. So as we had lots of this stuff, are there any questions or comments on the research that have been done? Something that we need to talk about and haven't talked about yet in here?
I uh festivals. Um, the Renaissance Fair that's. On this should only had two so far. And um, this would be the third one, so it isn't a real. You know, thing example. And I I think. I'm thinking of uh the Rocket Football, uh, you know, that's been going on for years now, and it's. Just so important and so popular and busy. It's been going what about ten years or more? And um. Oh, the library activities, you know, um, they've been going on for years too. I couldn't tell you exactly. You'd have to ask the library about that, the history of all that. And um, I guess that that was my only comment.
And we can, uh, we can add some some descriptions of those for sure.
Yeah, they're just, they've just been around a lot longer.
I have some revisions, and that's kind of.
Okay, yeah. Any else?
It was, I've an impressive amount of information. Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not reclamped, I just apparently can't speak.
So the other item that we provided was the 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 survey, so we printed it like this because this is how it's gonna show in people's mailboxes. When they get it, it's gonna be folded over like this. This then on the outside. That's the recipient. Um, and and so and so we'll, and we'll, when you open it, they'll have the cover letter on on the inside of the wrapper they can read. And will be included in here. So the survey itself, um, the first page is just background questions that we ask of everyone. Um, and then the inside on on the second and third page is really. There's a bunch of blank space on here, so please feel free. Essentially left this a little sparse in places because there are. Yeah, in this draft, and so. Um, you don't have to have all of the answers right now because you're just. But between, I think, now and the next meeting, uh, of questions that. You would like to ask on the survey, and if we can bring those back and talk about them at the next meeting. Add those to the survey and then get it out uh in June. Have results back hopefully by like the August meeting. What we do with these. So on on this page, once they're done, the bottom half, the blank on the back of the fourth page, we'll put our. You have a a business reply mail account, so we'll put the business reply mail account information on here. When they're done, all they have to do is just keep it closed and put. Some work offices. Have a way to do that.
Or they could drop it in the Dropbox here. Is that correct? Okay.
See, then we'll get them to you. We'll for.
Oh, yeah.
Put them all in and blow up and pour them.
Exactly. They just put them in, you know, do not drop them off here and. That that's fine too. Some of these get kind of chewed up by the post office machines. Throw them in the mail, the better. We put staples in them or they'll be. Um, yeah, otherwise, we're just trying to to have as comprehensive of a survey as we can. Um, I'm thinking that. You know, we. One, it's 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 a major folks area, and two, if we do. Grant for Nishtha to help pay for this, we might want to have a couple more housing focused questions in here. Not sure what what those look like yet, but um, we'll think on it, and if you want to give it some thought as well, we can. Help with some suggestions to talk about for the next meeting. Otherwise, yeah, this is just to show you what it looks like, how it works, and um, yeah, to get us to kind of think about. About your. Yeah, we like the format, it works well, um. L is out, we typically get about a quarter of them back on average, I think the best. Thirty thirty to thirty three percent. They bank on about twenty five percent usually.
Be prepared for more, because the one we did in twenty seventeen, I think we got like sixty percent back.
Blow our old record out of the water by.
Yeah, yeah.
So what what we might want to do, and we can do some some kind of back of the neck to math. Downside to doing these paper surveys is that they're expensive, not only in terms of postage, but the post office charges us. So the more we get back, the more it costs. It's 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 still cheaper than putting a stamp on all of them because after those get thrown in the garbage. Here, you're only paying for what you get back, but you pay a lot for what you get back. Um, so. Um, oh, what I was thinking is that we can, to get to a decent, um, you know, confidence level of plus or minus. They want to kind of assume a twenty five percent rate of return, possibly consider a sample of residents instead of. I don't know how many people are on the voter rolls, but um, that might, in instead of s- instead of sending out three thousand, you might only send out. You know, eight. Hundred back. Statistically, that might give us kind of a decent. Very decent bank of data. I just think if you want to get. Both for planning purposes and for political purposes, if you want to really reach. Us if you can.
If we. Send them out to every registered voter, that would be duplicating several in a home, wouldn't it?
Yeah, so every house, yeah, every household might get two or three.
Yeah, that probably.
And put that, we put the voter email mailing list in an Excel spreadsheet and. Eliminate the duplicates.
Yep, and then you would have to. Yeah, I mean, sometimes we get, um. Well, my husband got one, but I didn't get one or vice versa. Or, oh, we could just say.
Resident.
Resident or occupant or whatever.
Or maybe they could. Maybe they could just come in and get their own. And also want to.
Rose, I was thinking that if you had somebody who maybe have a handful of them. Up at the counter, so that way if somebody like you just said, well, my husband got one, but I didn't. Then they could come in and get one and fill it out too. And literally drop it right there. Other than it's no longer a random sample.
Well, if 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 we did a random sample, we'd probably be duplicated. Um, because I don't, I don't know that it may, no, I guess it doesn't matter. I mean, if you. A random sample, you you could fill it out with. Um. But maybe. And again, you know. And again, you know.
Yeah, there wouldn't be too much.
Literally, hey, you're getting this because you were selected by a random sample. Yeah, so that's like cut down on the people bussing about it, not saying that, well, you're less important than your wife or vice versa, it's just.
This is probably tied to jury duty, so.
Oh, that's mean.
Um, so I I'm just curious, if you're worried about the fact that you're, you could have a higher percentage of responses. And thus having it cost more than what you budgeted based upon your guests, you could go the sample route in order to lowball it. And then if you don't get enough responses back, you could always send out a second wave.
Yeah, we could, I mean, that's gonna add on a couple of months, and we need to do the math first too, I mean, there's not a huge difference. In sending one to everybody versus a sample. Um, and we haven't done them in a while, most of, well, we don't do these a lot anymore, and and when we do, they just say, I just send it to all of the, all the. Have so many renters here that. Way too many people.
I'm so curious, how many people would get it who don't even live in the city, because they're the owners of the property?
Yeah, so we do often end up sending them to Illinois or Florida or. Over, it's it's a summer home, I mean, not here, but in a lot of places, it's a it's a summer home and they need an house. So, yeah, I mean, if if they're registered voters, know that they live here, this is their.
And I like the idea that Mr. La had, which was putting the spreadsheet and just making up the voter list and then. Getting through that, because I think that would cut it down at least by twenty-five percent or more. And then we wouldn't, you know, and I think that's the best way to go right there. So one to every household, I think that's the best thing.
Yeah, we'll we'll do the math and kind of see what we come up with. I I I think we'll be okay budget-wise, no matter what we do. At times, kind of a good problem to have, it seems.
About this community, they are not quiet. They like to speak out and they like to be heard, so. If if we were to. Only do like eight hundred, I think that would hamper us, and and I mean. I understand the budget and stuff, but there's a lot of people out there that just want to be heard. And I don't wanna hurt the city in a way that, you know, because these people. You know, who don't get to be heard, then they're, you know, we we don't want to hurt them. And we want to make sure that everybody gets heard, and this town. Is uh, it it is, uh, I've I've never seen it before. Where people do speak out and they do want to be heard.
Other suggestions or questions?
I like this.
Is that cover everything that you needed from us tonight?
There, so um, if you want to bring that comment to the next meeting, or if you think of edits to make between now and then, just shoot me an email. Um, or dial a live email and. What would be, to make a decision on this at the June meeting, kind of get it finalized. Get it mailed within, you know, after that, that would get it in people. Their hands, you know. Send these out bulk mail, because that's significantly cheaper. Uh, so bulk mail amount, it takes about a week to get show up in people's mailboxes. Then we give it three, about three weeks usually. But a deadline on, you're in a couple of places where it's up to date. Typically, we get ninety-five percent of them come back in the first three days. Have a pretty good idea what our response rate looks for, look like.
Okay. Then we will move on to open discussion of our issues, not on the agenda, whereas item A is correspondence. Have our calendar, I don't know if there's any other. Here dates coming up, looks like we have the normal schedule for at least the next couple of months. Thing, any upcoming projects that we need to talk about?
Still a couple on the list, um, Vanderheide Ford Parking Lot, still waiting for them to give us information. The old bar on Main Street here, the Roundup, still waiting for her to turn in an official site plan. Oh, the Dean's, um. They're creating at the end of Ash Street, they haven't turned in any paperwork yet, so. All of that are coming, but until they turn in paperwork.
Um, then I guess it's time for, well, you retain the floor there, don't allow the staff comments for the city manager.
Um, just wanted to mention Andy and I met today with um, Jade Farms on Sixteen Mile and White Creek. They're not, I don't know, making profit like they want to or thought they would be, so they're considering, um. Possibly getting out of the marijuana business, converting that site into something else, we gave them the list of permitted uses today. And. All their options, they initially came to split that property in half, but looked at their deed and they bought the property from, um. Dale next door with zero splits on the deed. So we don't know if Dale didn't have any splits to give them. You know, if he's retaining the splits, I don't know, so we told him to go talk to Dale. So they're exploring options. Side though. Act accordingly and.
Says that now, Michigan.
The grow operation on Sixteen Mile and White Creek. In there. He said. Um, another thing we talked about this morning is Cedar Springs Mobile Estates. Our code enforcer is. Working with Cedar Springs Mobile Estates, um, on a regular basis, they are. Basically, this is the site plan from many, many, many years ago. A single, a single wide mobile home, manufactured home. Today's single wide is much bigger, and a lot of times they're trying to put in double wides where single wides used to be. And we just feel there's just not enough room. Um, they tried to put a couple in not too long ago and. Once they put the deck or the porch on the new home, there's literally six to eight inches between that and the next trailer. That's not safe. So we said, uh, that's not allowed. Um, so. Renee, the property manager, has told Deb, our code enforcer, they plan to do twenty more of these this year. Pull out the single wide and put in something newer, we don't have a problem with them updating the homes, but. Space-wise, it's just not working, so we're working with Andy and our attorneys and trying to figure out. Um, she she sent him a letter saying, you know, we feel it's it's time you need to submit a new site plan. And they forwarded that to an attorney, the attorney wrote us a letter saying, nah, that's not, that's not required. Well. Feel differently.
Following the one that was approved, I mean. Obviously, the attorney's going to say that, but if.
When this was installed, though, I mean, they're looking, they're playing with rules from many moons ago, not even today's rules.
Yeah, but part of the challenge with this is that the city has limited jurisdiction here because. Picture housing community, there's state. Down to how the width of the road and setbacks like they did. So we have somewhat limited jurisdiction, but um, we think that, I don't think that most of this would even comply with the existing state. Um, so it sounds like they're probably going to need to submit an updated plan to the state. That would be fine, kind of once they go through those those proper channels, you know, given the way this is arranged, I mean, it feels like if they want to bring in twenty. Double wides, like I I, based on the site plan, I don't see them physically fitting property and maintaining. But they're gonna have to make some modifications to the number of units that are in there, are all, I think. Um, but we'll see what they what they bring in, so. Done some some improvements over there. But, you know, when you're saying there's only eight inches apart, I mean, that's that's concerning, obviously, for a lot of reasons, I mean, there's. Fire in there, it's. I think we're in good shape, but we'll, I'm not sure how the how they're gonna react to having to put together a site. Time and effort on their part, uh. From the what?
Seventies.
And I think the code enforcer said those are based on like nineteen forty, uh. Action rules, so just to say times have changed, um, and the same. Different now and we're happy to do the upgrades, um, but they're they are gonna have to comply with.
So if they bring in double wides, they pretty much have to have whatever, however many lots they have, they have to have those. Because they need two lots to take up one house, right?
Yeah, potentially, I mean, these are like. Does, I mean, typically with, there are, there are setback requirements from the street, there are setback requirements from each other. You know, rear to rear, rear yard, I mean, typical just just like with for a house. So some of them could potentially fit a double wide down there without doing anything else, uh, but a lot of them can't. But they might have to make the figure. Lots, I don't know. Um, and frankly, it's not the cities.
Right, right.
Add into the fleet. But they have to do it in a way that's safe and it's not, I mean, that they're.
I thought at one time, wasn't there a problem with the emergency vehicles being able to get in there and fire hydrants?
They don't have any working fire hydrants.
And that's not something that that was part of their plan?
They got permission from Kent County Health Department, was it, to Deb say this morning?
Yeah, somebody.
Where they, where they didn't have to maintain the fire hydrants, that there's one fire hydrant at the entrance, that's the only one that's working. So our fire personnel are aware of that. Um, we encourage them, uh, Deb drives through there probably every other day, making sure, you know, the road isn't. Taken up, but I mean, we we can't. Park we have to work with and, you know, so.
So if this is primarily, um. Jurisdiction is primarily with the state is is. A way to hand this off to the appropriate agency with the state to.
So our goal will be to kind of facilitate that interaction between them and the state. So it it sounds like the state is going to require them, because they've dealt with stuff like this before. Sounds like the state would require them to submit by his plan. Take a look at it, once the state approves it. Your decision might be very simple, because you'll have a state approve, take part of you, but at least we'll have a record of what they were.
I would think their insurance company would have a little something to say about all that safety stuff.
Would, yeah, I mean, it's. I haven't been back there in a while, you know, when. I would think we drove through that when I first started here. Darn close together and. Closer they get, you know. Absolutely, can get out of control in a hurry and. Long issue in one unit, all of a sudden it falls ten and.
Okay.
The only other thing I had was, um, we've, I was notified Monday morning that one of our current council members moved out of the city. So now we have a city council seat open, posted it today to um, take letters of interest and applications. Third, and then before the next, before the June council meeting. Um, whoever applies will do interviews like we did to fill Ashley Hamel's seat not too long ago.
So this is another one post Ashley. Right.
Interested that wants to serve on the city council or planning commission, planning commission has a vacancy.
See if my wife's still home, because I did, I don't know if she left the city or not. Check map question, all right, so. Good to know. Um, uh, is staff comments from the city clerk? Thank you. And planning commission members.
Um, regarding the uh, name of the new park down there, we're working on a uh, DDA. We picked out a few names and I also, I was surprised to see how many names on this list, it was quite lengthy. Wanted Red Flannel Park, Red Flannel Town Park, so I did go to the Red Flannel. Office or the board meeting and I asked them if it does come to that. Um, if they would give permission to use the Red Flannel Town Park as a name and they voted yes, so it's in the clear if so, if if it comes to that. And uh, that's about it.
Other planning commission comments? Okay, and then I'm gonna come right back to you as a city council representative, unless you were speaking in that role for that, I'm not sure. But go ahead if you have anything more.
Review the agenda today to refresh my memory, but um, it was kind of a short meeting and uh, we did go over all the fees. That um, we have to raise, of course, and um. Had a special meeting and. Um, I I really can't remember the rest of it. It's only three meetings this week, this month, so.
Many meetings as we've had recently in a variety of arenas that were um, easy to remember what happened. Because there were maybe, you know, mental scars or something from them, um, then I I I'm happy to hear that this one was unremarkable.
Too bad.
Okay, uh, report of planning consultant?